And it is the morning session. The mayor is running a little bit late, so bear with me as we get this meeting started. It's Wednesday. A lot of people come downtown on Wednesday. This new thing called traffic again, so it's a good problem. We'll take it. Anyway, go ahead and call the roll.
Good morning. Rubio.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Maps.
Here.
Wheeler.
Okay, now we will go ahead and move to legal counsel, who will read the decorum for when people come to testify.
Good morning. Welcome to the Portland City Council. City Council is holding hybrid public meetings with in-person attendance in addition to electronic attendance. If you wish to testify before council in person or virtually, you must sign up in advance by visiting the council agenda on the council clerk's webpage at www portland.gov backslash council backslash agenda. You may sign up for communications to briefly speak about any subject. You may also sign up for public testimony on resolutions, reports, or the first readings
And it is the morning session. The we get this meeting started. It's Wednesday. Again, so. The roll. Here. Legal coun-
City Council is holding hybrid-
Drinking water. There is no safe level of lead in drinking water. Lead is cumulative in the body, meaning it builds up. The public deserves to know this and more essential information, facts based in data, science, and health. Nevertheless, it's this essential information that you won't find on the Water Bureau's abundant webpages. The Portland Water Director and department managers are all reluctant to admit their ongoing high lead in water data and their failure to significantly reduce lead with their year-old $20 million corrosion control facility. Our decades-old silent public health crisis continues. A Virginia Tech professor who is credited alongside his colleague with calling the world's attention to the water crisis in Flint, Michigan, and who specializes in water treatment was blunt during his interview with Oregon Public Broadcasting last year. He said, quote, "This is worse than Flint," end quote. Lead is one of the most potent neurotoxins. It affects the youngest children's developing brains, cognition, their behavior, their entire life course trajectory. Only after five years of strongly advocating, and only after another federal level lead exceedance, and only after negative press in 2022, the Portland Water Director finally launched a free city water filters program. However, this so-called program is a fundamentally flawed program, and there is no public information outlining details about free filters. You don't wait for children in your city to become poisoned and wait to be sanctioned by the EPA before you change course. Instead of one unreliable free water test, free filters need to be first and foremost because prevention is key. The bar chart at, oh, I'm sorry. Look at the bar chart. Portland and other Water Bureau are in the middle. Mayor and commissioners, we need to be looking at the water levels. Bottom line, the city is not prioritizing pregnant women and disadvantaged communities like people of color, low income, or adults with kidney disease. At about $50 a filter plus replacement cartridges, that's pennies for the Water Bureau. Until Portland Water minimizes lead at users' taps, their ethical and regulatory obligation, can you, Commissioner Maps, explain why the city isn't distributing free water, tap water filters, first and foremost, to the most vulnerable?
Thank you, Dee. Commissioner Maps.
Sure. Dee, I want to thank you for coming in today, and I do appreciate your advocacy on behalf of clean water. I share those values too. And today I have some good news I'd like to share with members of council. You might remember last year we brought on a new water treatment plant, which is designed to adjust the chemistry in our water. We've done our first round of testing to see the impact that this new plant would have on lead in water. And here I want to make clear, unlike cities like Flint that have lead pipes in some of their public infrastructure, Portland doesn't have that problem at all. However, what we do have are a relative handful of homes that were built in the late 20th century, and some of those homes have pipes in them or welding pieces that contain some lead. So we do see some leaching in those houses, and we have had a long program to help them. One of the other things that we did is we brought on this new treatment plant in April of 2022 to help adjust the chemistry of our water, to help those particular homes with leaching issues. We just got our recent report on how that's impacted the amount of lead that we see in some of these older homes that we've been talking about, and we see a 40% reduction in the amount of leaching for that particular community. And we're hopeful that as time goes on and the chemistry in the system kind of balances, we'll see these numbers fall. So Dee, thank you for bringing attention to this issue. I promise you, and want to reassure the public, that we are paying close attention to this issue and will work to make progress. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dee. Next individual, please. Item number 13127.
Request of Allison Rockwell to address council regarding the importance and impact of honest and informed healthcare workers.
Welcome.
Allison was going to join us in person. Is Allison here?
Is she online?
No, she's not online.
Okay, we'll skip her for the time being. Item 128. Next individual, please.
Request of Douglas Richards to address council regarding livability issues in the cultural district. They let us know they're canceling their request.
All right, 129.
Request of Diane Meisenhelter to address council regarding city climate plan. I believe Diane is joining us online.
Good morning, Diane. Maybe.
Diane, are you able to unmute?
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we do.
I'm so sorry.
Not a problem.
Since many of us testified at this-
..............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Smith claims renewable fuels will reduce emissions by 80%, but there is not evidence or proof of this. From the scientific expertise provided by Dr. Rich Pleven and others, it's clear that the modeling around carbon intensity is problematic. The various models all have major shortcomings and often produce contradictory results. Given this, the choice of model ultimately determines the supposed CI values. The Oregon Fuels Program the city is using was put in place before the intricacies of biofuel modeling were understood and national standards developed. Plus, there was industry lobbying, which weakened it even more than the problematic CA standards it was based on. Without controlling what feedstocks can be utilized and the fuels used in the hydrogenation process, as well as adequately accounting for land use change, renewable fuels could actually add to emissions or barely reduce them. The Oregon Clean Fuels Program, at best, claims to only lower the average carbon intensity of fuels used by 10%. More importantly, the carbon intensity numbers promoted in the city's renewable standards only apply to fuels sold for local use and have little to do with the fuels continuing to be dangerously transported and stored by Siena. Either the fuels continuing over the next five years, the fossil fuels continuing over the next five years, or the renewable fuels they hope to export. Along with an overall phase-out plan, we should be banning exports of renewable and fossil fuels, both when burned, add to the climate crisis. The city must stop falling for industry greenwashing, choose cleaner paths, and electrification.
Perfect timing. Thank you very much for your testimony. Next individual, please.
Request of Avril Nudelman to address council regarding police resources and criminals in Portland.
Here you are. Welcome. Good morning.
Good morning, mayor and commissioners. My name is Avril Nudelman, and I'm a part owner of a commercial property in St. John's North Portland. In the past two and a half years, my tenants' convenience stores experienced two armed robberies by the same person. And several attempted break-ins resulting in door damage, many broken windows and continuous graffiti tagging. In the early morning of January 10th of this year, a stolen car backed up into the entrance of the convenience store. The entire entrance was destroyed and merchandise was stolen. This incident is on camera. I called the police and inquired about pursuing the perpetrator, and I was told they do not have the resources to pursue this type of crime. This has been the same story for the last two and a half years. Because there are not enough resources to follow up on these crimes and no consequences to those committing them, the perpetrators are free to repeat them over and over, and they do. Numbers from the Portland Police Bureau show that burglars have skyrocketed in Portland in the last two years. The Portland Police Bureau has only two detectives in the property crime unit. These detectives are responsible for investigating not just burglaries, but also white-collar crimes and fraud. Portland has the second highest local state and local and state income tax in the United States. As a lifelong Portlander of 66 years, I have seen that as taxes increase, the quality of life here goes down. Last year, we had a record 101 homicides in our city, where Seattle, a larger city, had only 52. In 2022, Portland had 1,315 shootings, three times the 412 in 2019. Portland has one of the highest crime rates in America. The chance of becoming a victim of either a violent or property crime is 1 in 15, and I find that shocking and frightening. My tenant cannot keep employees who are traumatized by armed robbery. Neither myself nor my tenant can continue to file insurance claims for damage from criminals. I fear someone is going to be seriously injured or, God forbid, killed at my property. You know very well that I am not alone in being the victim of unrelenting property crime against small businesses in the city. I am imploring you, our leaders, act now. Speed up the police hiring and training process. A lot more funds for police training. Provide more spots for Portland police officers and classes for training. Attract and hire public defenders we lack. Make people accountable, make criminals accountable, make resources available. Provide more financial assistance to businesses who suffer loss due to unchecked crime in the city. Stop property crime from being the norm in Portland. Your job is to ensure that law-abiding Portlanders can go about their business, can work, operate their businesses, make a living, and provide for their families. If that's not possible, what real future is there here? Thank you.
Mr. Nudelman, thank you, and I have a couple-
Nudelman.
I'm sorry.
Nudelman.
Nudelman, thank you. I appreciate your being here, first of all. Thank you for coming to city council. I agree with you across the board. I want you to know that first and foremost. And as long as I am mayor, I will continue to work to do my very best to ensure that public safety is improved in the city of Portland. I absolutely agree that people need to feel safe and secure in the community. That's probably the foremost responsibility of government, and all of us, frankly, as a community, to ensure people's public safety. First of all, I want you to know I've committed to 300 new police personnel over a three-year period, and we're on track to do that. I want to report to you that we actually do not have a recruiting problem in the Portland Police Bureau. We had 1,500 applicants last year. We hired 71 personnel last year. The tie-up now is actually, and you correctly identified it, is the training. To become a police officer here in the city of Portland, you not only have to go through an extensive hiring and vetting process, a mental health evaluation, but then you have to get your state certification through the DPSST. And then you come back to the city of Portland and you train more, and then you're a provisional officer. So it's about an 18-month process to get somebody from hired to the street as a full-fledged police officer. Right now, we have a bottleneck at the DPSST, and this council has advocated strongly for the legislature to increase the number of training slots available in Salem, or potentially even working with some of our law enforcement agencies in the region. We could do a regional training here. It's still certified by DPSST. I met with the governor's staff as recently as yesterday to discuss this strategy, and I've personally met with the governor to push this as a potential way to get more officers on the street more quickly. There are repair grants available through Prosper Portland, and I hope somebody has made an attempt to connect you to that. If not, who on my staff is here today? Usually Bobby is here. Chris, can you make sure that you connect and that we get the appropriate contact number? We'd like to connect you with the appropriate person. You correctly identify that the criminal justice system is not well set up at this particular juncture for what are, and I'm using heavier quotes, "lower-level criminal activity," not murders, homicides. But it's still, it's adding up. And I agree with you that when somebody is repeatedly hit by the same individual over and over again, that is a signal that the system is not functioning the way it's supposed to be functioning. So I've had conversations with the district attorney and others about repeat offense as being a higher-level threshold than somebody who does something for the first time. I'll stop there, except to say that I want to do right by you, and I'll keep working as hard as I can as the mayor to do that. You're not alone, obviously. I'm sure, and it just so happens, there are some business people sitting in the audience shaking their head in agreement with you as you speak. You speak for many, but I want you to know that my colleagues and I take this very, very seriously. Commissioner Maps?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank Mr. Nudelman for coming in and sharing his story today. I apologize that you and your tenants have gone through what you have gone through. I want to reassure you that I think every member of this council understands the problem and is working really hard to make progress in this space. I also do want to pause and praise the mayor for his leadership in staffing up the police bureau. I've seen a revolution in terms of staffing there. Really proud of that. And I also want to take a moment to recognize Commissioner Renee Gonzalez, who is our new commissioner in charge of public safety. Renee has done, I think, some really innovative work around starting a conversation about how we hold people accountable for property crimes. Early days, of course, I think. Renee, you've only been on the job for about six weeks.
...............................................................
You know, it takes time. We need ordinary Portlanders throughout the city to continue to speak up, to continue to engage in the political process. And I know at times it feels like people aren't listening, but they are. It's just we got a lot of hard work together.
.............................................................................................
Our working class is most impacted by those types of crimes. So again, thank you for speaking up today, and please continue to be engaged in the
Better days ahead. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for listening.
Appreciate your being here. Did that complete communications? Did we get everybody?
It does. We could check to see if Allison Rockwell-
Yeah, let's see. Allison, are you out there?
Yeah, that completes communications.
Yeah, I don't see her. All right, we'll move on to, before I get to the time certain, let's go to the consent agenda. Have any items been pulled off consent?
We've had no requests.
All right, please call the roll.
Rubio.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Wheeler.
All right. Consent agenda is adopted. First time certain item. Item number 131. This is a second reading.
Amend the planning and zoning code to clarify the rules for shelters to facilitate more shelter options for Portlanders in need.
Colleagues, this is a second reading. We've obviously heard a presentation. There's been public-
Very glad to see collaboration among Safe Rest Villages, the Joint Office of Homeless Services, and BPS to identify all these necessary changes in order to move these shelter projects forward. I vote aye.
Ryan.
Thank you, Commissioner Rubio and the team at BPS for bringing this forward. Building the Safe Rest Villages, which was unanimously approved by the council-
...............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Creative and learn. Lot... ... or stopgap. It was a little sloppy. Because we were, we learned that we're not going to solve homelessness in a year or two or three years, but that this is going to be an ongoing pressure on the city of Portland and on future city councils. Commissioner Rubio and BPS did a fantastic job of listening, so really quickly. And so I just wanted to, I agree with my colleagues, this is common sense, but I also just want to acknowledge, this is a significant pivot, and it happened quickly. Pressure on our cities to make it happen quickly, and I want to acknowledge that as well. But last but not least, Commissioner Rubio, you have just done an exemplary job. I think of taking really complex issues, moving them through, helping all of us to understand what needs to be done, when it needs to be done, and how it needs to be done, and then having your teams and the bureaus work collaboratively to get it done. Very happy to support this. Thanks for your really good work on this. Next item. 132, please.
We are two minutes early for this one.
Let's take a two-minute break.
Okay.
132, this is time certain, this is a report.
Accept Downtown Clean and Safe Enhanced Services District Annual Report.
Colleagues, this item is to accept the annual report of the Downtown Clean and Safe Enhanced Service District, covering the period of October 1st, 2021, to September 30th, 2022, which is the first full year under which Clean and Safe's current ESD contract with the city has been undertaken. This report is one way in which city council and the community can ensure transparency and accountability for the management of the enhanced service districts like Clean and Safe. As you all know, this report is required by Clean and Safe's contract with the city. It includes financial information, descriptions of programs and ESD activities, and updates on stakeholder outreach, and firms and organizations contracted by the ESD. I also want to acknowledge that my office is continuing to work with the management and finance to address the currently vacant ESD coordinator position, which is needed to provide overall oversight and to recommend a formal audit response that is due in September of this year. This current item, Clean and Safe's annual report, does not address the audit response or ESD reforms to be subsequently and separately considered by the city council. Activities highlighted in this report are staggering. Over 30,000 exposed of, and over 176,000 needles collected by Clean and Safe during this one-year period. I appreciate the partnership that Clean and Safe has with Central City Concern, the professionalism of their public safety program, and their economic revitalization efforts like the recent holiday retail and holiday lighting programs. In response to city council direction, Clean and Safe has also developed a new program centered on addressing our homeless and mental health crisis to better connect people living on the streets to the services they so desperately need. I want to thank Executive Director Mark Wells, Board Chair Terrence Pascal, the leadership and staff of the Clean and Safe organization for what they've contributed in the last year to improve the cleanliness, safety, and livability of our central city. Mark and Terrence, of course, are here with us this morning to present this report in greater detail. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and good morning, Portland City Council. It is an absolute pleasure to be here today. We have a robust and data-filled report to share with you. And as you mentioned, this is a contract requirement to provide an annual report, but I look at this as so much more than a contract requirement. This is a absolute partnership, and I think one of the best examples that we have of a government and private sector partnership, putting our heads together to solve the many challenges that we have. I will go through the report in a rapid clip so that we have time for any of your questions. You have individuals that are signed up to testify, so I want to make sure everyone has plenty of time to comment. But before I do that, I want to thank my board of directors who volunteered their time. We are a nonprofit of 501(c)(3), and I could not do my job without the support of my board. So I'd like to hand it over briefly to our board chair, Terrence, for a few comments. Terrence.
Good morning, Mayor Wheeler and commissioners. I'm Terrence Pascal. I'm the current board chair of directors of Downtown Clean and Safe. I'm also the senior director of real estate for The Standard just across the street. It's my pleasure to present with Mark this morning and share with the public our accomplishments during this past contract year. I'm happy and proud to report the current board of Clean and Safe is working harder than ever, and more closely than ever with our dedicated staff and partners to continue providing enhanced services and to support the city's efforts downtown. On behalf of our board, thank you for continued support and diligent efforts, and we look forward to many continued years of service to our downtown community through this excellent partnership. I will hand it back to Mark for the detailed review of the contract. Thanks.
Thank you, Terrence. For the record, again, my name is Mark, your director of Downtown Portland Clean and Safe. So we'll go through our slide deck, going through both the contract reporting requirements and elements in our contract, but also adding extra information and extra programming that we are doing. I will begin. As you know, we are the oldest of our three enhanced service districts in the city of Portland. Terrence chairs our board, and we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. Again, our map that you'll see here is our district, 213 blocks, providing enhanced cleaning, safety, and economic development, and as I mentioned, the holiday lighting program, which was a fantastic... So first, starting with financials, we're happy to share our audited financials from last fiscal year. Just as a note, we have a couple different dates that we work on. We, our contract dates are from October to September, and then we also report different metrics in different times. So this is for our fiscal year 2122. At our cost shares for both public safety and janitorial are two core programs. And we will also note that we are expenses of around 8%. We average about 6%. Last year, we had higher-than-anticipated legal costs with the contract renewal. But our number-one job is to use our ratepayer fees to put as much service as possible on the street. Attached to the formal report that I presented to you earlier is our full audited financial report. We do that every year and always have. And we provide all those details for you to review and for the general public and our ratepayers as well. A note, too, at the bottom, is that in our 2022 budget, we will be phasing out our funding support of the Portland Police Bike Unit in July of 2024. And I cannot express enough that partnership and the very diligent and hard work of those four officers and our sergeant. We work hand-in-hand on crime response and being the extra for the police, but also ensuring that our ratepayers and our business community have access to police services. Looking at our business community impact, our business support and events, this is chaired up by our director of retail programming, Sidney Mead. A lot of brief on these, but looking at our downtown... Hand with the downtown marketing initiative, our pop-up shops have been vital. This gives smaller retailers, smaller business owners, the opportunity to try a brick-and-mortar in the downtown area. This year, we have seven shops featuring and representing over 30 small businesses, with, again, the goal to give them a chance at a brick-and-mortar and sign leases, which every year we will usually have a handful of these pop-up shops actually committing to downtown and signing long-term leases. Our program and mobile casks provide tourism information and general information. We have two full-time ambassadors this summer. Systems and new avenues for youth, opportunities for individuals into the workplace. And our downtown re... Working hand-in-hand with brokers and retailers, looking at first retention, our number-one goal of business and residential retention, and then recruitment, bringing businesses back to downtown Portland. Important development, we provide a downtown business survey that will be released sometime next week, giving a good census and a good pulse of both for feelings and general sentiment, also for the service... Annual pedestrian count, which was just... Have another slide here. Again, a good... And especially our street front small, sole proprietor... Again, looking at our pedestrian counts, we have fifth gear... ... uses a cellphone, more accurate account of traffic. Statistics, almost a 26% in overall traffic from 2020. A 2-point, looking at June, a lot of people coming downtown, and again, a 60% traffic recovery from peak pandemic levels. Daytime workers in the... If you come down on a Friday night or on the weekends, downtown is busy, and it's wonderful. Program. Next, transitioning to our janitorial and program. Starting with our enhanced safety program. Vendor, we have, are now contracting with Garter World Security Service, that our public safety coordinators are not the police, but they are highly-trained and professional public safety coordinators that provide a wide range of services to everyone in the downtown area. Again, as I mentioned, compliance with the city's sustainable procurement policy and labor peace, following through with those commitments. We now have a new proprietary dispatch number, 388388. That is the Clean and Safe dispatch number. That is available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Again, the uniform is a clear identity and a reframed approach. Everything that we do down at the bottom, this is from my director of operations, Steve Witherley, "Safety first, customer service, and problem solving." That is the mantra, and that is how we do everything at Downtown Portland Clean and Safe. And lastly here, increased collaboration with the city and community services. I cannot speak highly enough and with enough kudos to organizations like the Street Service Coordination Center, the Impact Reduction Program, Portland Street Response. We are in constant dialogue with all of these organizations, all these agencies, and putting our heads together and constantly looking to problem-solve and deliver services to those in most need and to address our livability issues. Breaking down some of the statistics at our enhanced service districts, or, excuse me, our enhanced safety services, on average of 1,100 service calls per month, with peak times from 7:00 to 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. Again, a big change when we switched our security vendors, we went to a 24-hour model. That was a request primarily from our street front, smaller businesses that are asking for more eyes and ears on their business, being able to identify a business that might have been compromised or burglarized, and giving our street front retailers some peace of mind that we're out and about. Three shifts a day, 6:00 to 10:30 p.m. are our day and swing shift, and then a graveyard, that is our new shift from 10:30 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. And that's also working in concert with the police bureau, with Central Precinct, and with the many, many security vendors that are downtown, making sure that we're sharing information and working as efficiently as possible. And leading this contract is our account manager and our site supervisor, who are two fantastic individuals that are extremely committed to our mission and have delivered excellent results since this contract change. Lastly, looking at the types of calls that we handle, asking people to move along, always treating people with respect, always asking and offering services, realizing that we have no authority. Our public safety coordinators are just like Terrence and I. So we treat everybody as an individual. We always ask for and deliver or offer services, getting people's compliance, getting them into a better place, and also looking for business, supporting businesses in continuity. Drug use in doorways, welfare checks, that is a lot of our job, making sure that individuals are okay. Aggressive behavior, business assist, citizen assist, that's everything from wayfinding to helping potentially an intoxicated partygoer in Old Town getting an Uber ride home. And of course, medical assistance. We've had multiple 911 calls, medical emergencies, where our public safety coordinators are the first on the scene, triaging and getting the right services to that individual. Again, public safety highlights for our contract year, we're very proud of the over 17,000 business outreaches. Every day, our public safety coordinators are tasked with doing proactive engagement with our businesses. Again, looking at all those stats, a tremendous amount of work that we're very proud of, amazing things. This is a picture under the Hawthorne Bridge, just to give you an example, as you all know, before and after, it's very powerful. We're very proud to be able to offer this service, and again, supporting the Impact Reduction Program, supporting the Street Service Coordination Center to work on these. The mayor alluded to our stats earlier, I won't repeat them, but a tremendous increase all the way around. This slide, so much more than enhanced services, again, we are an enhanced service district, one of three. We are funded and we are organized to provide enhanced services. And we absolutely go the extra mile. The picture on the left is a volunteer project we did with Salvation Army, and this was actually a request of our Garter World staff, asking if they could have volunteer opportunities. This was a team effort with our vendors and local businesses, collecting over four tons of trash around the Salvation Army at First and Burnside in about a three-hour period. The middle picture, a tent on fire. This was, this is a common occurrence, and again, especially in our graveyard shift, when we don't have a lot of eyes out on the street, oftentimes, our public safety coordinators are the first on scene, putting out the fire, and then making sure that individual is safe, has a place to go, and offering them services, which has included literally driving these individuals to a shelter, getting them clothed, and getting them back on their feet. And the picture to the right, this is during the pandemic, this was actually my second week on the job, when I was out with our cleaners, doing my cleaning shift, and this is what we did with the conditions, as you know, during the pandemic, and the conditions have increased much better than the picture on the right, but it shows the work that we've been doing. Our vendors, I'll start at the top, and this is a fun and a very proud moment for us to share, that we have just signed a contract with Bybee Lakes Hope Center, and we will be starting later this month our Community Health Outreach Worker Program. This is two full-time community health outreach workers, working through our vendor with Bybee Lakes, and Alan Evans, and Mike Davis, and their amazing team. They will be working in full concert with our current vendors and with our existing social service providers, think of Portland Street Response Project, Respond, Central City Concern's own outreach efforts, and to provide that next step for when we encounter individuals that are asking and are receptive to services. Again, local companies, Central City Concern, Eponic, which is our data digital collection system, providing our metrics, a local Portland company, a newer vendor, New Avenue for Youth and Work Systems, Portland Business Alliance, and then Tross, our amazing lighting company that lights up all of our trees. Recent business sentiment, I alluded to this, this is our business census survey, this is the first slide that I look at when I get the returns, how am I doing? How is our team doing? And as you can see here, we had, I believe, over 300. We had almost 100 more respondents this year than last year. 68% with an overall, very much are somewhat satisfied with our services. Again, almost 60% with our cleaning, 75% with our public safety, and almost 90% with our holiday lighting. And again, that report will be released to the public, I believe, next week. Looking ahead. Again, I mentioned our new CHOW program, again, our Community Health Outreach Worker Program. I am very excited about this in that I'm out in the district as much as I can walking. I encounter individuals, I have seen firsthand individuals that are ready to go to a shelter, and it will take myself, my staff, business owners, sometimes two, three, four days to get that individual into a safe place. The idea is that either during the day when they're on duty, or making quick referrals and being at a promised place and time the next day, we'll be able to help individuals get into that next location. Either Bybee Lakes, which as you know, has a 30-day emergency shelter, a lower barrier, and then if they qualify, a higher barrier shelter into Bybee Lakes. We anticipate that a lot of individuals will not be able to get into Bybee Lakes, but the job of our community health outreach workers is to get to know our current system and understand what options that we have, and literally drive them, escort them, sit with them, help them through intake, and to get into a better place. with them, help them through intake, and to get into a better place. Again, 24-hour public safety services, we have multiple locations, multiple retailers that cease night operations, shipping, delivery, staff working later because of safety concerns, and now they're able to reopen. They're able to do graveyard shipping and deliveries, and if they have an issue, they can call our dispatch number, and we can be there to support them. New electric bikes and electric assists for our carts, if you've seen our barrel pushers, and that is the term that they use very proudly, they are extremely heavy. We're looking to electrify those, as well as we just ordered a fleet of electric trikes, so that we can respond to any call for service within 30 minutes or less. Continued and improved safety programming and services, my team and I provide a wealth of public safety services, crime prevention services, training, resources, connecting them to our existing city services through the Community Safety Division. We've had a wonderful partnership with 311, making sure that our community is aware of that and utilizing that service, which is working very, very well, I have to tell you. And then additional marketing and promotion, as well as business recruitment. We are never going to stop on business retention, residential retention, and then bringing facts, folks back downtown. And with that, I just want to let you know that I personally am as committed and have the same belief in downtown that I did two years ago. As most of you know, I did work for the city for about 11 years, and I took this job because I love this city. The challenges in front of us are enormous, as you know. It will take us a lot of time and a lot of hard work to get out of it, but this partnership, again, is a perfect example, and I'm able to tell business leaders who reach out to me when they're making return-to-work decisions and doing their due diligence and saying, "Mark, is it clean and safe?" I'm able to highlight and articulate these partnerships with key agencies, Street Service Coordination Center, key individuals within those, where we put our heads together and we solve problems, and it's for everyone, especially our most vulnerable individuals down on the street, and I see that only expanding, and I look forward to coming back next year with metrics and data on the CHOW program and how we've evolved and integrated that program into our current services. So with that, thank you so much for the opportunity, and I look forward to many years working in partnership with the city.
Thank you. Great report. We do have a number of people signed up for public testimony, but if there's any comments or questions at this point while we have these gentlemen in front of us, certainly entertain that.
I'd rather listen than have them come back.
Perfect. Don't go far. How many folks do we have signed up?
Nine people.
Nine people, three minutes each, please, name for the record as you come up, and Kealan will call the names in order.
First up, we have Steve Witherley.
Welcome, Steve. Thank you for being here.
So my name is Steve Witherley. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to testify today for transparency. I am the Director of Operations for Downtown Portland Clean and Safe. I'm also a downtown employee, so I work downtown, so I test, my testimony is through both of those lenses. My background is in disaster response and humanitarian aid work, with 15 years managing complex programs in multiple countries. In my role with Clean and Safe, I manage our safety and street services work. One of the criticisms of our public safety work and street services prior was that it only benefits the wealthy, but the majority of our calls are for services to businesses, small businesses, storefronts, coffee shops, trying to stay open in business and open their doors to customers, and for support for vulnerable communities. If you'd seen the report, you would have seen that at the 2023 Lunar New Year Parade, we worked with the Portland Chinatown Museum, and our public safety coordinators, at their request, led that parade to provide a presence of public safety. I shared a few abbreviated reports about the calls for service we go to, just to give you a peek into the daily activities. Number one, called to a tent on the sidewalk. We contacted the business representative on site, who told us he was wanting to power wash the sidewalk. We asked the individual if he would move, he said no. We spoke with the business representative and explained the proper city process for reporting, so he can clean the sidewalk. Number two, we were dispatched to a call for people sleeping in the doorway of a business. We approached the campers kindly stating safety concerns. They were asked it apart from the doorway, they agreed. The male individual was missing his shoes and socks, we asked if we could get him some, so he said yes. We went to Salvation Army and got him some new shoes and socks. Called to three individuals sleeping against the vent of a hotel, this is a safety issue. We asked if they would leave, one was non-responsive, we did not see breathing. We called 911 Emergency, and a supervisor, we continued to wake the individual, arrived on site, talked to one of the tent owners, and politely asked them to move 10 feet to the left, there's a safety issue and access issues. Two individuals said yes, the third individual was non-responsive in the tent. I called for PBB assistance, when the officer arrived, we looked inside and found an unconscious individual with a needle in their arm. We opened the tent, removed individual, administered Narcan, the individual was in and out of consciousness. Additional PBB support arrived, along with medical, and took control of the scene. The last one, dispatched to a doorway, spoke to the individual to move, he agreed if we gave him 10 minutes. We spoke to the group in using drugs in the doorway, they agreed to move. One of the individuals began telling us that he was newly homeless. We offered to call PSR or other services, he asked us if we would call his mom, so we did, and she said that she'd been looking for him, and she would come immediately to pick him up. We told them we would wait until his mom arrived, his mom arrived later, they departed together. Those reports give a peek into our daily calls. We are dedicated to serving all, safety first, customer service, and then problem solving the situations we find. We look for continued improvement as we work to meet the goals that are set for us over the last year. Thank you so much for your time.
Next up, we have Sidney Mead.
For being here today.
Hi, my name is Sidney Mead, I am the Senior Director of Downtown, I am for Downtown Portland Clean and Safe. My work includes research and reports that help shape our advocacy and marketing for the downtown business area. Our end of the survey, which has alluded to highlight three key factors. 77% of the retail indicated that they have lost customers due to the reputation of downtown. 77% of the businesses have repaired windows, doors, and other parts of their building because of vandalism. 85% of the respondents felt their businesses have been negatively impacted by individuals who are homeless or living on the sidewalks of downtown Portland and in Old Town. For the most part, my, despite these numbers, my job is to find positive activations and reasons for bringing people down to visit downtown Portland, but it is important to have a clear understanding of the conditions downtown businesses are operating in. On the positive side, property district traditionally fund the holiday, we were able to expand this program. We're hearing anecdotal stories, this, our calls, and the park statement, that these light installations are reducing the calls for service and helping to create a positive, safe, and activated downtown office, and the city staffers who work so hard on this program, and make sure that you're aware, we're definitely interested in expanding this program. Finally, the Visit Downtown program runs a robust marketing and promotional campaigns for downtown and Old Town area. While travel Portland markets out of, to out-of-towners interested in Portland, we focus on our local and regional audience, working hard to get locals to come downtown. With roughly 24,000 Instagram followers, social media sites in the downtown area, only behind travel. Again, I want to. In support of downtown through applications and marketing, I'm looking forward to working with everyone to make downtown safer, brighter, and more vibrant.
Thanks for your good work.
Next up, we have Anita.
Good morning, Anita.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, for this opportunity to speak and for your service to our city. My name is Anita Davidson, and I live downtown. I'm a homeowner and a ratepayer of Clean and Safe. Mark Wells, we just heard from, and Steve Witherley as well, and all of the vendors, it's clear that Clean and Safe still provides a lot of basic services, and we wish the city did that instead, because as taxpayers and ratepayers, we feel like we're hit twice for those services. But that's not the reason I'm here. I'm here today to highlight two ways in which the downtown Clean and Safe annual report is incomplete. First, on financial information regarding its $1 million in personnel expense, and second, on its participation in the city's process to evaluate the enhanced service districts as recommended by the city audit of 2020. Now, Mr. Mayor, you've already mentioned that that still is in process, but in reading this report, it seems like it's totally absent, and therefore, I wanted to be sure and highlight that. Those have the following impacts. Ratepayers may be unclear what their money funds. Stakeholders are not told shared costs, are told that shared costs is an efficient management technique, when in fact, it is not always. Shared costs from Clean and Safe fees subsidize operations of the Portland Business Alliance, which as we know, is a lobbying organization. This compels ratepayers, especially homeowners, to fund operations of the PBA, which is a violation of First Amendment rights, of freedom of speech and association. Failure to improve governance of the ESDs means the city, Clean and Safe, and the PBA are not fully accountable to ratepayers for the authority, direction, control, and management of this program. My request to you today is to reaffirm Council's resolution from September of 2021 for the review and improvement of the enhanced service districts specifically related to governance, formation, and inclusion of residential properties as fee payers. If necessary, extend the deadline for action, but make it firm. Now, I have a few brief details. The report says the PBA employees, without this subsidy, the PBA might not sustain its current staff or operations from member dues alone. Finally, this report does not mention how Clean and Safe or its manager, the PBA, participated with the city to address the ESD audit, we've already talked about that a bit, but it's important that this still be done, because without it, multiple issues like this, like the fact that the, who pays and how much governance happens while Clean and Safe does not happen. While Clean and Safe says that, for example, the city code handles the fees and the rate schedule, you speak to city staff, and they say that's a Clean and Safe problem because it's their program. So until we get some governance that really explains this to all the parties involved, these issues will continue on and on. Thank you very much.
Anita, if I could just comment briefly, first of all, thank you again for your thinnest is all the people who control this program, as well as the PBA are sitting right behind you.
I see them.
And I agree with you, I think these are legitimate questions that you have raised, and in the interest of transparency, I think it would be terrific to have that spelled out. So I just want to say that for the record and appreciate your testimony.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next individual, please.
Next up, we have Kaitlyn Day online.
Hi, Kaitlyn.
Can you hear me?
Yep, loud and clear.
Wonderful. So yeah, hi, my name is Kaitlyn, and I guess I just wanted to say that I want to direct this testimony to the staff at Clean and Safe, more so than council, because I know council has heard from me many times. So I work with Western Regional Advocacy Project, or RAP, and I know you're familiar with our organization, because there was a letter sent to city council and articles in the Portland Tribune claiming that we were dark money lobbyists who conspired with the auditor's office to write the audit. And I guess I just wanted to get into some of the specifics of why the audit actually happened in the first place, and where a lot of our concerns actually stemmed from, which was, one, yes, we did have critiques of how the program was managed, in particular, the impacts it has on our unhoused community members, but in particular, we were just trying to get information about what's happening with these districts, how are they managed, what kind of oversight there is. So naturally, we did a bunch of public records requests, and getting those records was nearly impossible. Almost all of our requests were either denied, or we were told that when they went to go find the records, they couldn't find any of them, and that's why we ultimately went to the auditor's office, because we were like, okay, we've like been going to different bureaus throughout the city to try and get information, maybe you have information as auditor's office. And the staffers we talked to at the auditor's office didn't even know what ESDs were, and so that kind of sparked their attention, they were like, wait, there's a city program that's collecting fees from property owners and funding services in public space, and we don't really know anything about that, nor can we find any documents about that. So that's why we were called in as stakeholders for that audit, was because our simple search for information produced so many roadblocks. So yeah, that's, I kind of just wanted to set that record straight a little bit, because I feel like that's a pretty bad interpretation of how this audit came to be, and certainly, the auditor's office wasn't trying to push our agenda. The only reason the audit findings really like agreed with a lot of what we found is because a lot of it's simply true, that a lot of that record-keeping didn't happen, and we're still not seeing a lot of transparency with how this audit process is happening. And I know part of that's the city's fault, but also, Clean and Safe, you sent a letter to city council saying that you weren't going to participate in the audit until there was this investigation into the auditor's office, and it was on behalf of the work that we did in RAP to try to get information and what prompted this audit in the first place. And I just think, if this all boils down to transparency, you would definitely be ecstatic to be part of this process, especially because it's technically part of your contract, it's part of your scope of work, and following through with your scope of work is part of your contract. So yeah, I'm out of time, but I would definitely want to continue these conversations later.
All right, thank you, Kaitlyn, appreciate it.
Next up, we have Lauren Armani.
Good morning, Lauren.
Good morning. Dear Commissioners and Mayor, my name is Lauren Armani, and I'm the Systemic Change Program Director at Sisters of the Road. Thank you to Anita and Kaitlyn for testifying with your perspective and unique experience. It allows me to focus more on the public process of the downtown Clean and Safe ESD. Although you all are saying that this annual report is not related to the audit response process, it clearly lays out the program's priorities, and those do not include holistic public outreach and responding to the audit response, which you all promised in September 2021. After answering the, yeah, September 2021, after answering the arduous survey, going to all the public engagement Zoom meetings and meeting directly with the program manager, those of us able to utilize the public process, which just largely did not include our unhoused residents in downtown, are left with nothing. Shawn Campbell vanished from his role with a faint promise from the Office of Management and Finance that they'll move forward with the legally required audit response process. The program coordinator role has been vacant since August, and we have not seen any attempt to fill it. Talking about their current programming feels like a distraction from the fact that there has been no transparency in the continued review process. In fact, all the materials from the initial review process were taken down, and many of us were forced to go through a public records request to access them. Thankfully, some of them have been reposted. The Enhanced Services District, as Kaitlyn described, have been allowed to slander organizations and verbalize that they will boycott the process unless an investigation has taken place. They've been able to say this with no consequence. How do we know that the programs that they are putting forward and advocating for are actually serving the communities they claim to? There, I took the survey that they showed in their presentation, and it was not nearly as holistic as the survey presented by Shawn Campbell, which took me roughly an hour and a half to complete. And for example, the crow abatement program, which was universally despised in the public listening session, is now heralded as a benefit to the community. So this independent auditing process is exactly what prompted the city auditor to review the program in the first place. It illuminated the city's severe lack of oversight in the supposed public-private partnership. This 2021, 2022 annual report feels like a slap in the face to those of us calling for a public review process. It also illustrates exactly what the city auditor recently emailed us about, that the terms of the ESD audit review process are not being met, and the clock is ticking. Accepting the review now without recognizing that there's an intentional avoidance of the audit review process will serve to erode the remaining trust residents of this city have for their local government. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Dan Handelman, Portland Cop Watch.
Good morning, Dan.
Hello, Mayor, Commissioners, can you hear me okay?
Yep, you sound good.
Great, thank you. So I'm Dan Handelman, I use he/him pronouns, I'm with the group Portland Cop Watch, and we appreciate that Clean and Safe is required to present an annual report in an effort to increase transparency. As you've heard several times, we recall, there's a plan in place to phase out the Portland Business Alliance's Business Improvement District funding of the salaries of four Portland police officers who respond primarily to their private security guards. In March 2022, the phase-out plan was supposed to be completed in the following two years, meaning there's just one year left to figure it out. If that plan is incorporated to or mentioned in the report, it's not clear. I heard the mayor say, these will be considered separately by council, but this is a report on what happened in the past year, and should include. on what happened in the past year, and should include any discussions that took place on these reforms. I heard Mr. Wells bring up phasing out the police in 2024, but that is not so far as I can see anywhere in the report. It is interesting, however, that Clean and Safe Security are responding to calls that don't rise to the level of crimes quite often, but with 5,335 calls about unwanted persons, but only 48 about trespassing, and 342 about sidewalk obstructions. It's not clear what the 17,792 business outreach calls are. I think he mentioned that, but it doesn't seem like those are calls for service in the same sense. The cost of the four officers, we think, is listed at $518,000 per year. We've always said that those with money should not be able to pay for more police response than those without. Certainly, Portland Cop Watch and most of the people who are subjected to law enforcement action don't have half a million dollars a year to seek special police protection. We also understood there would be a system set up to hold the Clean and Safe Security accountable if there are community complaints about their behavior. The advantage to state employees of security such as police is that there are accountability mechanisms which report back on the outcomes of complaints. That feedback loop doesn't exist for private entities. It's telling that half of the report as a financial audit would scant attention paid to the underlying concerns that were raised when the Clean and Safe contract came due in September of 2021. This report comes out at an interesting time as one of the wealthiest companies in Oregon, Nike, is asking for off-duty police to act as their security guards. The PPB's policies say that any such overtime has to benefit the whole community. Why should it benefit the wealthy? We hope there's a discussion today about the progress of ending the mercenary police program for Clean and Safe and urge the city not to allow officers who are complaining about being stretched too thin to be used as security guards. And finally, I just want to add that the induction of Bybee Lakes into the Clean and Safe process makes it sound like a street-to-prison pipeline. You know, that Bybee Lake is a former prison that's being used as a shelter for houseless people, and it's very far from downtown. So basically, it's nice to hear that people are being given rides, but it kind of feels like those people who are given one-way bus tickets out of town and are being put in a literal former prison instead of being able to make decisions for themselves. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Karen Iken.
Good morning. My name is Karen Iken. I'm the Director of Real Estate Services for Unico Properties in Portland. We have five properties in the Clean and Safe bid, and I came here to publicly express my gratitude and appreciation for the services that Clean and Safe provides and the partnership we've built. Clean and Safe does more than clean the streets and provide an impression of safety in the bid. As we continue to try and encourage workers of all types to come back downtown, Clean and Safe has offered public safety trainings and connected our tenants with broader safety resources. Clean and Safe is actively engaged in community building, introducing neighbors and retailers to each other, fostering a sense of neighborhood and a sentiment that we're all in this together. Their partnership with Central City Concern and others provide a path to work for people with substance abuse history. The work that Clean and Safe is doing is vital to restoring the vibrancy of downtown. Thank you.
Short and to the point, thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks for being here.
Next up, we have Mark Schlesinger.
Mark, welcome. Thanks for coming in today.
Good morning, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Mark Schlesinger. I'm a partner with Schlesinger Companies, a fourth-generation Portland-based family business. I've been on the board of downtown Portland Clean and Safe for over 10 years, including chairing the organization multiple times. Local visionaries of our city such as William Nido, Pete Mart, Doug Goodman, and our father, Ralph Schlesinger, were passionate about our community and saw the need to work with our city leaders decades ago, and thus formed and funded the initial Enhanced Service District, now known as downtown Portland Clean and Safe. This organization is an excellent example of how the public and private sectors can work together in partnership for the greater good of the entire community. Working with great partners such as Central City Concern's Clean Start Program, we continue to work diligently to keep our downtown core sidewalks and storefronts clean while empowering individuals with prior addiction issues who want to change their lives the opportunity to do so. I must add that throughout the pandemic and volatile political and social unrest our city experienced, this group of hard-working individuals never stopped working and doing their utmost during challenging times the likes of none of us which ever seen or experienced before. Guard a world as well as a partner who acts with compassion when interacting with individuals downtown. Programs such as this show the success of how the private sector, through an Enhanced Service District, can support the city with additional services. Make no mistake, in my opinion, the city still must maintain basic services, including fire life safety, public transportation, cleaning, and law enforcement. Our city and community still has many challenges and obstacles to overcome in this post-pandemic environment. We need to show our citizens that we are compassionate and that we care. Do not let the flame of what was once a vibrant downtown flicker out. Portland was once the envy of many metropolitan communities throughout our country, and I believe it can be again. The city must do its part by encouraging business to bring their employees back into the central core. You can do this by leading by example. Bring your workers back to their offices. Make our downtown a safe place to visit and work. Incentivize developers and investors. We believe in ourselves, in our community, and show it through action and results that I believe others will as well. Positive change needs to be encouraged and celebrated. Those that are bent on vandalism and illegal activity need to know this is not acceptable here in the city of Portland, and there must be consequences for their action. I hope all of you, as the leaders of our city, will continue to support this amazing partnership known as downtown Clean and Safe and will take strong, bold action to return our city to its stature at once held. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Schlesinger, I agree with you. I have optimism that the city will come back, and I actually think it's going to come back differently, and I think it's going to come back better. And the media is a little slow to catch up to where I am, but I'm actually seeing the green shoots of recovery. And part of it is some of the programming that we talked about earlier. Yeah, I was, I don't know, how many people here saw the Winter Lights Festival, have gone to that yet? It's about two-thirds of the people in this room. I think I was joined by probably 30,000 of my fellow Portlanders when we went last Friday night with a number of members from my staff. Highly encourage it, and the commentary that I heard repeatedly was, wow, it's a lot better than I thought it was going to be. Because people just hear that negative barrage about the circumstances and condition of this city. And while things are definitely challenged, I'm not going to say they aren't, they are, while things are definitely challenged, I believe we're doing the things that we need to do, developing the partnerships we need to develop, working with people in the community who believe in the future of this community, and we're making progress. One final point, and then I'll shut up and let us move on. We have brought our city employees back. We have led by example. And as Andrew will know, I've now put the challenge back out there to the private sector. Join us. We took that step. Our employees have made that commitment. Join us. And so if there's businesses out there that are sitting on empty real estate, you know, we've brought our folks back, and frankly, I think all of us here agree, it's much more positive to work with other people than it is to sit there in your slippers in your living room fighting the dog. Bring them back. The city needs it. Thank you for your testimony today, and I appreciate all of your leadership in the community.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Tessa Peterson online.
Hi, Tessa. How are you today?
Hi, great. Thank you so much. And I, well, I'll introduce myself first. I'm Tessa Peterson. I'm the Managing Director for both the Woodlark Hotel and the Ace Hotel, as well as all of the restaurants that sit in those buildings. I'm also a member of the Board of Clean and Safe. First, I want to thank you for the announcement of bringing folks back into offices. My team is very much looking forward to serving you coffee, food, and drinks in our restaurants, coffee shops, and bars. So thank you. I also would like to echo what Anita said earlier, you know, in an ideal situation, our enhanced cleaning districts would truly be enhancing kind of what they're doing. I was working in an old place, but...
...service staff. I recently had two associates meet in, and they stayed in the Woodlark, and they reported that it was just standing in terms of the customer service and the support and the help they got for their various needs. So I just want to extend that thanks to you and your entire team at the Woodlark. Well done.
Awesome. I'll share that with them. Thank you.
That completes testimony.
All right, good. Well, that completes testimony. Colleagues, any further questions or comments? And if not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the report. Commissioner Ryan, did you have some questions? Completes testimony or comments?
candor and transparency. We're trying to navigate a pretty fractured system. I would say that the creation of the Street Service Coordination Center with Nate Zakara as the incident commander has been our lifeline for when we have built trust and rapport with someone, is doing a direct handoff. We also work with the Fire Bureau's Community Team, I believe that's what they're called. We worked with an individual for about a month and a half at Pioneer Square, and I didn't even know this team existed, to my deficit, and I met two firefighter paramedics in a fire ambulance, and we all put our heads together. I learned that they were working on a medical restraining order to get this person the help that they needed, but they didn't have the agency to make those decisions. They shared with me their frustrations and their concern for this individual's medical concern. So we are on the phone with, whether it's that unit from the Fire Bureau, the Community Team, Portland Street Response. One of the things I did with our contract renewal, when we were asked to start up our CHOW program, was immediately make contact with Robert Burke, the program manager at PSR, and with Barb Snow with Project Respond, with the Behavioral Health Unit, Transition Projects, all of the entities, both government and private sector, that have a hand in social services in my district. Because the last thing I wanted to do was create another silo and to not communicate. And just as our public safety coordinators and our janitorial staff really serve as the eyes and ears reporting everything, from sidewalk curb cuts that are too high to significant issues, I see, again, the CHOW program being that conduit to being able to facilitate it. So right now, it's a mishmash of going through SSCC with Nate Zakara and his team.
Yes, is that the systems of the city, the first responder systems, have, there's an improved communication between you and those first responder systems?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. What I didn't hear, that's why, and maybe I missed it. So the county has a navigation system in the joint office. What is that communication like? Is it through the Portland's first responder system? Is there direct access to the county's navigation system that's paid for by the taxpayers that lives in the county?
My answer to you...
The guy right there, Steve?
Yeah, that's the guy.
Why doesn't he come up? Let's do this. I wanted to...
...direct connection to that employer. I'm going through our programming, very similar to this report, and then a very robust and honest queue. I've had businesses say our lease is up in 2030, Mark, and I'll be very transparent. We're on the fence. So what's going on? Able to articulate, and these meetings are usually done ship from your offices with Smart Park, with other private security vendors that we work in full concert with, and we're able to explain, having a business in the downtown district of Portland Clean and Safe, you have access to all of these services, free security assessments, personal safety de-escalation training, a two-hour deep dive from the Behavioral Health Unit, a escort your employee late. You can call us 30 minutes before you're going, or we will get you either connected and get you direct information.
Housed X amount of people, how many people are now houseless. So it's net gains that actually show you the results that you need to track improvement.
I really appreciate that, and I think that's something we should absolutely put in our metrics, especially when we really work on a geographic area of organizing and working for improvements, is measuring that success or lack thereof and being able to report that.
And in my last comment, I'll avoid crow abatement, though I'm fascinated by that 1% for the crows. I will actually pivot to say thank you for meeting with and with Vicente Harrison about the park ranger.
Geographic area of organizing and working for improvements is measuring that success or lack thereof and being able to report that.
And in my last comment, I'll avoid crow abatement, though I'm fascinated by that 1% for the crows. I will actually pivot to say thank you for meeting with Deena Long, the Director of the Parks Bureau, and with Vicente Harrison about the park rangers. Park rangers are part of our safety system, and I think I just got the pleasure, because I heard from you, to introduce all of them who met, and now you're part of the community's...
Very thorough, and really good to read and hear about these examples. In your report, you stated that the business surveyed, you surveyed 75% who were satisfied with the services. I just have a quick question about the demographics of the businesses that were surveyed, and were the, how was this conducted in other languages? I'm just curious.
I don't have that data in front of you. I will absolutely follow back as far as the full report will be going out and with the demographics. So you want to know who actually submitted the report or the survey?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that all businesses are included, especially because we have a number of diverse and multilingual businesses downtown that are very small. So just want to make sure that they're also included in that information gathering. Just have a couple more questions. The other is about sustainability. So your report stated that you collected about 75,000 bags of trash and garbage, including 76,000 needles. And because you, I'm sure you know, we're wanting to ensure sustainable practices throughout the city, can you talk to me a little bit about what your practices are with that?
Steve can jump in here if he knows more than I, which he often does. I will say that about a year ago, Central City Concern, our janitorial contract, has a direct process with Metro and the St. John's landfill because of the quantity, as Commissioner Ryan alluded to, during the pandemic was picking up a lot of trash, and we were very cautious following the city's protocol to ensure that it was trash and not personal belongings. We used to take all of the garbage every day, take it over to Central City Concern's office across 405, stage it there and then have it. Now it is directly going out to, when our trucks and trailers are full on a daily basis, about a ton a day going directly to the Metro landfill. Now that, and then partnership with that, and we've had to be very careful sorting out our sharps and our biohazards following Metro. So we follow Metro's sustainable practices as a, you know, agency vendor to Metro, so that's sorting all that out. We've actually, I mean, we had a couple incidences where community members had put bags down, we had collected those, those weren't sorted through our protocol, and needles were found. And so we're very cautious. That's why you'll see our staged bags are green, a lime green. We always want to make sure, one, that we're capturing that data for needles, but also ensuring that we're following Metro's guidelines. So essentially, we're bringing everything to Metro, whether it's batteries, propane tanks, all of that, and then following Metro's protocols as a customer there.
Right. And the sharps also go to Metro, or where do those go?
I believe they do. I'm not sure. That's a good question. I'll happily follow back.
Great, thank you.
Yes, I know with the county, because again, four of the county safe deposit boxes, we support those and fill those and empty those. So I would assume it would be part of that county collection process, but I can certainly answer that.
Would love to know, just, yeah, just to know.
It's a lot of needles. Where are they going? They're the right place, absolutely.
So in your report, you also stated that you're hoping to better coordinate with other entities, and you named Portland Street Response and Project Respond, et cetera. Can you give us just a sense of, and you're going to give us updates on this, can you give us a sense of where you are in these relationships and relationship building?
Absolutely. Again, when our contract was renewed a year and a half ago, and basically, we renewed the contract, I was very excited about it, and then I said, okay, I've got to start a CHOW program, and we've got to do it right. And just with working for the city for many years and working with a lot of the different entities, and knowing how fractured our mental health services is from the city, the county, and different systems, I was very passionate about, first, asking industry experts. I'm not a mental health clinician. I've worked with and around many people in mental health crisis, but I wanted to get the information right off the bat. So initially, I set up meetings with all of the agency, city and county agencies that have a hand in mental health services, and asking them for their advice, and I got great advice. Like, it's going to be really, really hard to find a licensed mental health clinician that wants to do fieldwork because we can't find any, and that's Project Respond with the county, who's tasked with a primary role in mental health services. And it was making those connections, and I've had those connections ongoing as we've built this process up, taking time. And then now, as Steve starts to onboard our two CHOW workers, it's having those connections that I've built at a higher level with program managers at agencies and with our nonprofit social service providers. I had a wonderful dialogue with the head outreach coordinator for Central City Concern, making sure that we are in absolute... for Central City Concern, making sure that we are in absolute sync. And then, so their onboarding will be slow and methodical, but it will be understanding who's doing what, what's working, what's not working. How can we augment your existing services? And then how can we increase those services? Because a lot of it, as you know, is case management. It can take months, if not years, to get someone to say, I'm ready. Let's go. And that's our big goal, is when someone's saying, I'm ready, I want to go now or tomorrow morning, and you better be here at 8 o'clock because no one's shown up like they said they would, we need to be there at 7:55 and ready to go. So I think we have a good structure, good partnerships, and now it's actually putting the, kind of the rubber to the road and getting, getting services to these individuals.
Great. I'm really happy to hear that you're making progress on that and would love to hear an update in the future, how that's going.
Yes.
My last question. So as I understand it, security guards have to go now through the DPSST training? Is that true?
Yes, all of our officers are certified through DPSST, absolutely, day one, before they ever are even on the contract. Yes.
And so if, if security guards that you contract with are not acting appropriately or engaging in behaviors that are of concern to community, so what's the process?
Absolutely. It's a great question. Part of our contract renewal, and again, going above and beyond, if you go to our website, right at the top, you'll see accolades or complaints. That was a contract requirement. And that is something that I'm very passionate about, and Steve even more so. If we're falling short, whether it's customer service or to your point, someone is doing something inappropriate in the public safety realm, we want to be the second, the first or second to know about it right away. So on our, on our website, anyone can file a complaint. That goes directly to me. It also has language and information. People can file a complaint with the state. Again, DPSST is the agency that regulates and monitors private security in the entire state. With that, we've actually, with our new security vendor, we have not received any complaints. Those are all public record. I submit a monthly report from our account manager every month to both Carl Lyle at the city and with Stephanie Howard at the mayor's office. And that is our annual require, or our monthly report on any complaints or accolades as well. And so that report goes in there. If there is any report or any qualifying use of force, that is detailed in that report as well. And those, all those reports are subject to review at the discretion of the city.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Let's see, a quick thank you observation and then a question. Thank you for promoting 311. And for Portlanders listening at home, this is an essential component in reducing our emergency wait times. And so please keep preaching, to use 311 whenever we can on non-emergency events. I just want to echo some of Commissioner Ryan's observations on the intersection between public transit and a thriving downtown. You know, I'm, I'm on the train five to 10 times per week right now, varying degree of good trips and bad. Witnessed young woman pull a knife on a homeless man last week because she felt threatened, had been assaulted. And I continue to observe that those that are most impacted by a feeling of unsafety and truly lacking in safety on our public transit are disproportionately women, are disproportionately seniors, are disproportionately youth. And I just, there's, there's a direct intersection between revitalizing downtown, getting, going down here and having a feeling and a reality of a public safety, of our, of our public safety system working. Last question, have you guys had any engagement on Beacon? Are you engaged in that conversation at all?
With Beacon?
Yeah.
I am not, no, personally. I don't know if my team is.
Just curious. Thank you.
And just very quickly, we're on constant dialogue with Andrew Wilson, the Executive Director of Public Safety with Trimest, working with Transit Police, with the captain at the sheriff's office. We're actually looking to enter into an MOU so that everything is clearly written when we're on Trimest, what our role is, what our scope, to make sure that we're in complete alignment with our scope with the city. I couldn't agree with you more. I've had employers say, my staff want to come back down, but they don't feel safe on Trimest. And again, that's where I'm talking about, we have text to 911. You can text to 911 if something's going on, all those different parts. So that, we're absolutely part of that discussion of ensuring that there's increase in public safety on Trimest.
Thank you. Great. Thank you. Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the report. Commissioner Ryan?
There was testimony that I thought could, was misleading. The fact that you have a relationship with a provider that happens to be located where there used to be a jail, Helping Hands is a good thing. And the fact that they have treatment centers and recovery centers as a part of their system is a good thing. And so it actually is there to be a solution to stop recidivism. So it's actually the opposite of going back to prison. It's actually to stop that trend by offering direct services. So I thought it was important to get in the public record some truth, as I have actually spent much time asking these questions over the last few years. So, thank you. And please explain the 1% for the crows. I just need to know.
That's the total budget cost of the crow abatement program.
Because of their, well, I won't say that right now, but because of their nuisance?
You mean, why do we have crow abatement?
Yeah.
Yes, because of the waste deposit-
I mean, that's my own yard.
The aerial bombs from the crows coming down on the floor. We used to have the Poop Master 2000, I believe it was called.
Did you just say poop master?
Poop Master 2000. Yes, I did on public record.
That's a title?
That was the name of the machine.
It's a machine.
Oh, it's a machine?
Not an individual, no.
It was a good try, I think.
So the effort is to move the crows east over, away from the highly trafficked commercial districts downtown, so there's less crow waste on the ground.
Got it. Thanks.
Yeah.
Very good. I move acceptance of the report. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Maps. Any further discussions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Rubio?
I want to thank Mark and Steve for your presentation today on this report and for your deep care and commitment to our downtown. It's very evident. And as you know, there's a lot of public interest in this partnership. So thank you for answering all of our questions today. I'm really glad to hear that you're establishing and strengthening relationships with providers and other key stakeholders. And I hope that circle continues to grow. I look forward to learning more about how we ensure that there are more accessible opportunities also to keep the public informed about what, what you're doing. I'm also, I also appreciate the increased commitment to accountability and compassion and safety of our vulnerable communities that you engage with. And also commitment to our labor, city labor agreements. That was particularly important to me in your work with subcontracted frontline workers. And I just want to also say to Mark, I really appreciate your continued accessibility and responsiveness to my questions and my office's questions and inquiries when, when they do arise. The problem solving examples were really helpful, as well, need for transparency and clarity around governance and finance issues. And as a suggestion for a future report, as I mentioned, it would just be great to include what we talked about in terms of how your organization is, what they're doing to comply with our sustainability standards. I just think that's good practice to do. But overall, just want to thank you again for your deep care and your great work for our downtown. And I vote A.
Ryan?
Thank you so much, Mark and Steve, for being here and all those who testified earlier. I kind of left it all out there with the Q and A part. That's really, I think, the most important way that we connect when we do reports. I will just make a couple more comments. I actually love that you come, Steve, from disaster relief. I think your lived experience in that profession has been really helpful. And I like the way that you all show up. You show up in a way that's very transparent, very authentic. I'm not surprised to hear that you've enhanced the service delivery and that you're part of the system. We can't all do it alone. And we have to keep shaking up the system and improve it. Obviously, the drop offs between the city and the county are notorious, and you're actually helpful for us to see that. We need the provider network from the county to be linked in with some of the things that you're talking to. So that was why I was going down that trail of questioning. I agree that the audit report will be refreshing. The city has to play its part to make sure that we don't drop the balls on that. And we do need, I appreciate the concerns that were brought from those who live downtown as residents that feel, because it's real, that they are double billed, if you will. And, and so we have to keep looking at, under the hood of that as well. Great to have you here. I look forward to next year's report. More importantly, I look to doing another tour. And if you think I'll be helpful, please include me in some of these meetings with the private sector as we all come together to help activate downtown.
Thank you.
I approve the report. I vote I. Thanks.
Gonzalez?
Thank you for your comprehensive report, for all of the testimony. I'm going to keep it brief. As a reminder to the clerk, I am attending a memorial service for firefighter Norbury in Gresham. It may be late this afternoon. I vote I.
Maps?
I'd like to thank Mark, Terrence, and Steve for today's presentation. And I would also like to thank all the members of the public who testified today. And I would like to thank Clean and Safe for the work they do. Today, we learned that Clean and Safe's janitorial program collected more than 75,000 bags of trash, removed more than 24,000 biohazards, and picked up more than 176,000 hypodermic needles. In addition, last fiscal year, Clean and Safe's public safety program provided assistance to more than 3,000 community members and connected 81 people to mental health assistance. Furthermore, as we learned today, a survey of downtown businesses shows that 59% of businesses were somewhat or very much satisfied with Clean and Safe's janitorial service program, and 75% of businesses were somewhat very satisfied with Clean and Safe's public safety program. These are impressive results, and I want to thank everyone who made them possible. Still, there is room for improvement. Awkwardly for this council, the improvements that are most urgently needed are largely on the city's side of this public-private partnership. For example, I am disappointed that more progress has not been made on the auditor's recommendations for improving the management of the city's enhanced service districts. Now, I recognize that the city has had some difficulty staffing this work, and I know the mayor has a plan for getting that work done. Still, I would like to take a moment to request that by July 1, 2023, the mayor's office send council a written update on the progress that has been made on the auditor's recommendations. If the mayor's office is agreeable to that proposal, I am happy to accept this report and move forward with the work of keeping downtown, the central east side, and the Lloyd District clean and safe. For these reasons and more, I vote I.
Wheeler?
So I'll, I'll respond to that. I was trying to avoid that in this particular conversation. But as a reminder to council, the ESD coordinator position was funded on a one-time-only basis. And we need to have the conversation in the context of our ongoing budget discussions about that being a full-time, ongoing FTE, which is my personal preference. But that's not a decision we can make outside of that budgetary process. We have until September to respond to the audit. We will respond thoroughly to the audit in that timeframe. And so my office is obviously moving forward with all of you. There will be some disagreements between the ESD and the city. I think we all acknowledged during the testimony, I wish more people could see it than probably the few hundred that we're watching, because it perfectly encapsulates, for me, the conflicts in our community around the challenges we're currently facing. We are facing a homeless crisis. We are facing a public safety crisis. We are experiencing stresses as we tried to come out of the economic issues created by COVID. And there is no one roadmap. There is no monopoly on the truth. There is no one best way to accomplish those things. And the ESD is caught in the middle of all of these things. And so I think, for my part, you've done a very, very good job of navigating some of the, the conflicts that community members feel around various aspects of this. I agree with my colleague, Commissioner Maps, and others who've said that transparency can only help us here. This is the time where on the clothes line for the entire world to see, because there is no perfect solution here. And as, as we disclose information and provide access to key operating metrics, as Anita and others had requested, there'll be some criticism, and that's fine. I mean, let's, let's just put it all out there. Let's have the conversation. Let's weigh the pros, the cons, and then make our decision as we move forward. But what is unmovable for me at this point is the inherent value of the ESD. And this is, of course, not our only ESD. I've been appreciative of the fact that our ESDs have pivoted and been responsive to community concerns. This report is very different than the report I received a number of years ago from this ESD. And, and it is far broader in terms of its subtlety, in terms of its understanding of the need for compassion for those who are on the streets, in terms of the demands for results from the people who are paying for all of this, and the concerns about transparency. But, so again, I think you're doing an outstanding job of, of navigating difficult times. And as proof of that, I would simply say, this council spends a lot of time navigating those very same challenges. Your approval rating is currently five times greater than ours. So I'll just let that be the metric to hang out there at the end of this. I vote I. The report is accepted. Thank you all for your, your work on this.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Please have a seat. We will take, we're at the two-hour break here, and we will take a 10-minute recess for closed captioning. We are in recess. Thank you.
Now, imagine you are landlord in East County and your tenants are behind on their sewer bill. And those tenants choose not to work with BES to set up a payment plan for catching up on their bill. In this scenario, the landlord is ultimately stuck paying the sewer bill. As of December 1st, 2022, there were 272 tenant occupied properties with past due sewer and stormwater charges that fall into this category. This ordinance is designed to help those people. We'll do that by waiving up to $1 million of service fees associated with delinquent sewer accounts. This proposal is a win-win-win for the city, tenants, and landlords. Here's why. This ordinance will help East County tenants and landlords who are behind on their sewer bills, and this ordinance will make it easier for BES to resolve outstanding bills. Here to tell us more about this proposal, we have Sheri Peterson, Revenue Programs Manager with Environmental Services. Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Maps, and thank you, city councilors, for having me here today. I am Sheri Peterson, the Revenue Programs Manager for the Bureau of Environmental Services. And I'm here today to request council authorization of one-time service fee waivers for a relatively small group of customers, our sewer-only tenants with past due balances. So we have 6,000 sewer-only customers that receive sewer and stormwater from Portland and get their water serviced from another provider, namely the Rockwood Water District. Therefore, if these sewer-only customers don't off their water, we have about 1,000 sewer-- therefore, if these sewer-only customers don't pay for service, Portland cannot shut off their water. We have about updated as of December 2022, we have about 300 sewer-only customers that are tenants, mostly residential, that have very old and large unpaid balances from years of customers not paying their bills and the city not taking collection action. We are asking council to waive up to $1 million in uncollected sewer and stormwater charges to reduce past due balances because we allow these balances to accrue for years. We need to lower these balances to make payment possible, which will lessen the immediate financial impact on the customers and the Bureau. BES needs to collect fees for sewer and stormwater service to comply with state law and to maintain a favorable bond rating. We currently are limited to waiving $500 per account for the proper conduct of business. We're asking council to approve the use of larger waivers for our past due tenant sewer-only customers because it's necessary to resolve these significantly aged balances. Until now, we have only notified tenants of their past due balance because they are the account holders and we are cautious about sharing tenant information. However, beginning March 1st, we plan to notify property owners that their tenants are delinquent because sewer and stormwater service benefits their property and the fee for service is ultimately their responsibility. There are about 300 delinquent accounts, most with balances between $300,000 and $25,000. Half of these customers owe less than $5,000 and a third of them owe more than $10,000. Most tenant sewer-only accounts are in East County because that is where the Rockwood Water District is the water provider. Looking at the neighborhood characteristics, we know many community members earn lower incomes, are people of color, and who speak English less than well. We've done an extensive amount of outreach to tenants and have had nominal success increasing payment arrangements and financial assistance participation. Anyone, tenants or owners, are eligible for interest-free payment plans. Income-qualified occupants with the bill in their name are eligible for a Tier 1 or Tier 2 discount plus an annual crisis voucher. Additionally, more than 30 of our sewer-only customers have received some state debt relief to date. We anticipate waivers will incentivize 1.1 million in repayment of 2.1 million in uncollected revenue. For all tenant sewer-only customers with past due balances, we plan to apply waivers in an amount relative to how long their balance has been past due. So the older their balance is, the bigger their waiver. And for those that are past due by more than $5,000, we plan to apply an additional waiver in an amount relative to how quickly they can repay their balance. So the quarter-- excuse me, so the shorter the payment term, the bigger their waiver. Waivers allow us to set manageable bimonthly payments, which decreases the likelihood of customer default and increases the Bureau's collection probability. Waivers also allow us to maintain reasonable payment terms. A customer is more likely to default on a payment arrangement if the payment term is too short or if it's too long. If it's too long, it also delays our collection of revenue, increases our administrative burden, and lowers our probability of collection. In this example, which represents about half of our customers eligible for these proposed waivers, we illustrate how we propose to set payment arrangements and apply waivers. The financial benefit to the customer is a one-time service fee waiver based on the age of their balance. So this five-year age balance of $5,300 gets about a $2,000 reduction. And the payment term waiver is more for a shorter term. The three-year payment term would get an $800 and some dollar reduction compared to a $530 reduction for a six-year payment term. So in total, this customer's past due balance could be reduced from $5,350 to $2,692. Most importantly, the bimonthly payment amount for this payment arrangement is manageable with the application of the waivers. On the left side, you can see what the bimonthly payment amount would be, whereas on the right side, it lowers their bimonthly payment, making it far more feasible for the customer to make payment. If authorized, BES would begin outreach with both tenants and property owners about the one-time waiver incentives. We've prepared language-accessible notices for potential assessment, payment plan options, and waiver eligibility. We've also identified those customers that we will call directly, any customers that owe more than $20,000. We have been working very closely with Water Customer Service and their assessment team to develop tools and training in advance of noticing customers, which we will do upon authorizing the one-time service fee waivers. The one-time waivers are part of our long-term strategy to prompt repayment, minimize impacts to owners and tenants, and to get and keep balances in check moving forward. Waivers are needed this first year of tenant-occupied special tax assessments to address the significantly aged balances. Beginning this year, we will notify property owners of their tenants' past due balances in advance of assessing owners each June for unresolved past due balances. And I will note that if you are on a payment arrangement and in our good standing, you can stop the assessment process. So why now? In 2019, the past due balances for this group of customers grew to a point where they caught our attention. Over the last few years, we explored new ways to reach these customers, including working with the Rosewood Initiative to collect payment and extend help when needed. Unfortunately, we weren't able to reach many of our sewer-only tenants. So over the last year, we looked at our existing options for resolving non-payment, including plugging sewer lines, confirmed our authority to assess owners that benefit from our services, and looked to our sister agency, the City of Gresham, for best practices. And so, beginning this year, we will include tenant-occupied sewer-only properties in our assessments. We've been assessing owner-occupied sewer-only properties since 2004 with a brief pause in response to the pandemic. Including tenant-occupied sewer-only properties provides parity in our assessment process. So in summary, we find that these proposed one-time waivers are a necessary tool to help tenants stay in their homes and to help owners keep their homes. We want this relatively small group of customers to contact us to set up payment arrangements and avoid special tax assessment. We need council authorization to reduce these old and large balances so that payment arrangements are more likely to work. And that is the end of my presentation, and I'm happy to accept questions.
Great. I've got a couple. First of all, thank you. This seems like an innovative approach to sort of a thorny question. There's probably no great way to resolve this, and so I appreciate the creativity behind it. Can you remind me-- water bills are, of course, issued based on the volume of water.
Correct.
How are sewer bills calculated, just speaking very generally?
Very generally, we use the water consumption as a proxy for your sewer consumption and bill you based on your sewer consumption.
Oh, that's interesting. And is there an appeal for that, an appeal process?
We do not accept appeals that debate your consumption of sewer. No?
Okay, I was just curious. Next question, how long does it take to run up a $25,000 delinquent sewer bill?
That's an excellent question. Years of non-payment.
Like how many years?
We have some customers that have such a high balance because of 10, 12 years of non-payment.
And is it your belief that they aren't paying because they don't know that they need to pay or they can't pay, or what sort of your working theory on that?
It's another good question. We increased our outreach to the tenants over the last few years. We even worked with the Rosewood Initiative to call folks, to email folks, and unfortunately, 30% of the tenants were still unresponsive. We could make guesses as to why they were unresponsive, but we exhausted our outreach efforts. So I'm confident that we made every best effort to reach the account holder, the tenant, and still just didn't raise the response we were hoping for.
I appreciate that, and it sounds like you've made that effort. Is there any concern on your part or your colleagues' part that by creating what is effectively an amnesty program, if I could use that term, that others who have been paying their bills will look at that and use that as incentive not to pay going forward? What is the statement that you're making to prevent that kind of thing from happening?
Thank you. Moving forward, we will be processing special tax assessments for any of our sewer-only customers that have not paid. This is an annual process, and this is part of our strategy, just to keep those balances in check. The reason that we're asking for these waivers and one-time waivers of that is to just address these old and very large balances since we had years of non-payment and years of not taking a more robust collection action.
Yeah, and I don't have a great answer either, so I'm not-- I want to be clear, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I can just see a scenario whereby somebody says, wait a minute, I really struggled to pay this bill over all these years. They didn't, and now they're off scot-free, and I'm not. And it creates that kind of disparity that we all hate to see in our tax structure, right?
Right.
And so you've weighed that concern and you've come to the conclusion that eliminating this bad debt, if I can use that term, you see that as being more stabilizing influence and creating at least some additional revenues for the Bureau? Is that the way you're looking at this?
It's a balance. It's a win-win, as Commissioner Maps stated. The Bureau hopes to collect some of our fees for service and at the same time, reduce balances to the point where a payment arrangement is feasible for the customer. So we're meeting them halfway.
Okay, and again, I really appreciate the creativity around this. Thanks. Commissioner Maps, did you have a comment?
No, we could get further into the weeds on this one, but probably--
I don't think it would help me. Yeah, I don't--
What we're trying to reveal here is as clear as it's gonna get, I suspect.
Good.
Should we ask if there's public testimony on this, which I'm sure there's not?
No one signed up.
All right, any further questions, comments, thoughts? Thank you for the presentation. Please call the roll. This is emergency ordinance.
Rubio.
Thank you for the presentation, and thank you, Commissioner Maps, for your leadership on this and for bringing this item forward. I also appreciate that you found a creative way to provide financially burdened households in our communities the financial tools to get back on track because sometimes you just need that opportunity to get back on track. So I vote aye.
Ryan.
Yes, I thank you, Commissioner Maps. I enjoyed our conversation yesterday. I didn't realize that the Rockwood section of Portland had this unique relationship with sewer and water, so that alone was fascinating. I think that what you proposed today is very thoughtful and also, as Commissioner Rubio said, it's creative and adaptable. And so I think you're on the right track. I vote aye.
Maps.
Sheri, I want to thank you for that, this presentation. I spent a lot of time thinking about how to make this proposal accessible to folks who don't practice on a daily basis. You did an amazing job. BES also did, I think, an amazing job of coming up with a creative and equitable way to help renters and landlords stay in their homes. This is also, I think, an equity move for East County. Really great work all around. I'm happy to vote aye.
Wheeler.
Yeah, there's-- I don't see any pathway to solve this problem. So I think you've come up with as creative and thoughtful a solution as anybody possibly could, and I applaud you for it. I vote aye, and the ordinance is adopted. Thank you.
Thank you.
To the regular agenda, item 138, please report.
Appoint Lila Rydel, Scott Latta, and Derek Thompson, and reappoint Celeste Carey to the Portland Committee on Community Engaged Policing.
Colleagues, before I turn this over to our presenters, I do have a motion to amend as follows. First, understand that Ms. Rydel's appointment has been postponed for now. I also understand that additional information is needed for Mr. Latta and Mr. Thompson. Therefore, I move to amend the report to remove Ms. Rydel from the appointment and to add biographies and statements of interest for Mr. Latta and Mr. Thompson. Can I get a second?
Second.
Very good, and we'll keep the amendment open. Thank you, colleagues. Now we'll move into the presentation. Welcome Samir Canal and Dory Grabinski of the Community Safety Division to introduce this item. Thank you all for being here today. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. The Portland Committee on Community Engaged Policing, also known as PSEP, was moved into the Community Safety Division in May 2022. A project manager, who I'll introduce in a moment, started work in July 2022. And at the time, there were five PSEP members appointed out of 13 spots, and terms started and ended at different times, which made training nearly impossible. The mayor's office, over the last year, has filled the vacancies that existed at the time and brought PSEP back to full membership. We also did most of the adjustment of the timeline over that period. Apologies, for the record, my name is Samir Canal, Advisory Boards and Commissions Manager for Community Safety Division.
Thank you.
Yeah, so the mayor's office filled the vacancies that existed at the time, and the membership became full over the fall. There are-- one term ended and another member stepped away, so there are two at-large member vacancies that exist at this time. And this appointment report would fill those two. Applications on file were reviewed to ensure that the mayor would have a pool of options who are eligible for PSEP. Two candidates were selected to fill the vacancies for at-large members as well as to complete the process of standardizing term start and end dates. And then separately, the Community Safety Division is working to support the mayor's office as they fill the two youth vacancies, which in the coming weeks. I will now pass it over to Dory Grabinski from the Community Safety Division, who's the project manager for PSEP.
Good morning. I'm Dory Grabinski, PSEP Project Manager. Thank you for having us. I have the pleasure of introducing the candidates for PSEP appointment. First, we have a prospective at-large member named Derek Latta. Derek asked us to share his regrets that he cannot attend this morning. So I will read the bio and statement of intent he has prepared. Scott Latta is a resident of the Powellhurst Gilbert Neighborhood and works by day as editorial director of a global relief NGO based in Washington, DC. A Portland resident since 2015, he hopes to join PSEP in order to take action on local issues that impact his neighbors and community after years spent working in international relief. He lives in Portland with his wife and six-year-old daughter. As a PSEP member, Scott hopes to hold PPE accountable to its obligations, understand more deeply how police interact with our most marginalized citizens, and to give voice to those citizens so that PPE will act more fairly, responsibly, and justly towards all. Next up, we have Derek Thompson, who is here with us today.
Mayor, commissioners, thank you, and good morning. Let me just quickly say, sitting here through the previous conversations and whatnot, it's so much-- I'm interested in all of that, but-- so I want to try to keep my head straight on to what I'm supposed to be talking about. Tell you a little bit about myself. And again, my name is Derek Thompson. I was raised-- I and my family, as a matter of fact, was raised in Portland, Oregon. I attended Hoddle and Benson School. Matter of fact, my grandmother was one of the first women to work in the shipyards years and years and years ago here in Portland, so we're quite ensconced in the community. My experience that I bring to this organization is, up until 2021, July 21, I was the CEO and the board chairman of a local nonprofit organization. But we served-- we served four different counties, as a matter of fact, in Oregon, Southwest, Washington. In that time, our main core group that we worked with were the-- was the homeless community. And in that, we gained valuable experience, and I'm confident to say that what I bring here, as far as that part of it goes, is I'm confident that there aren't many that know more about the homeless community than myself and my colleagues who were in this organization. It was called hands a favor, as a matter of fact, because then we worked every day except Sunday for almost eight years with that community. And in that time, we served more than 24,000 homeless people with 28 different partnerships in Portland and Southwest Washington, including social service organizations, churches, schools, pretty much every kind of organization that you can think of. So I think I bring real, real valuable insight into that community. And currently, we are-- I have founded another organization, and we're taking that one of 501(c)(3), and it's called Voices for Community Unity. And that's where my experience will come in, is to bring a different perspective and be a voice for that voice's community. And having worked with law enforcement previously in our other organization on several-- on quite a few occasions, and with all the other types of organizations that I was speaking about, we can bring valuable, out-of-the-box experience in order to help make a difference in the relationships and the trust factor that is lacking in our communities these days, and help do all those things that I hear you talking about up there and make Portland and Southwest Washington become better, more desirable communities for all of us to live in. My intent is to do those things, just that I just said, is to be that voice and to bring-- to bring-- just like we did in other organizations, to bring people and organizations together to have serious, honest, open, and even unwanted conversation that will lead to action and not just lead to more conversation. And that's-- in a nutshell, that's what I'm here for.
We appreciate your being here. We appreciate your willingness to serve.
Thank you for having me.
Colleagues, well, do we have any testimony on this item first before-- oh, I'm sorry. Is there-- was there more to your presentation?
We are also requesting to extend the term of Celeste Carey to align with the newly standardized term dates. Celeste currently serves as one of our PSEP co-chairs and has been an invaluable member for the last year and a half. She has extensive experience in policy work, neighborhood organizing, and public safety. She is devoted to elevating the voice of the community and is instrumental in guiding PSEP's work, particularly as it relates to the intersections of racial equity and mental health.
Perfect. Thank you.
And we do have one person signed up.
All right, let's hear from him.
Dan Handelman.
Dan, welcome.
Good afternoon, mayor and council members. This is Dan Handelman with Portland Cop Watch, using he/him pronouns. Can you hear me again?
Yep, loud and clear.
Wonderful. All right, so as usual, Portland Cop Watch has no concerns about the specific people being nominated to the Portland Committee on Community Engaged Policing. It is troubling, though, that one person's biography was included in the intended item. Two were included as attachments, and one wasn't included at all. But I gather that person's nomination's been pulled off the agenda for today. This administrative issue is in stark contrast to the very helpful tables, which list both the dates of appointment and dates of the terms being ended for the previous members, the new members' info, and a full list of PCCP members. Even with-- well, two people now being appointed today, PCCP still will be two people shy of their full 13-person membership. We continue to urge council to adjust the PCCP plan to address what happens when PCCP's memberships get so low they can't form a quorum. We've been asking council to take action to allow advisory bodies, including the PCCP, to set their quorums to majority of seated and active members. PCCP's quorum should be based on the number of seated active members, not on the 13 theoretical people, when recruitment or council inaction leaves them shy of that total. Along those lines, it's notable that three of the people who left PCCP won the committee for just between 1.5 and five months, underscoring the huge amount of turnover on this and other city advisory boards. Perhaps the auditor should examine the reasons for volunteer turnover and suggest ways the city can improve its retention rate. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Dan. Appreciate it.
Matt completes testimony.
Very good. Colleagues, this is a report. Any further discussion? I'll entertain a motion to accept the report. Oh, sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for reminding me. To the amendment, any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll. Aye.
Aye.
All right, amendment's adopted. To the main motion is amended. Please call the roll.
Thank you, Samir and Dory. Great presentation. And mostly, I want to acknowledge you, Mr. Thompson. Thanks for being here today.
Thank you.
Your lived experience is so important, and I'm really grateful that you told some stories about that. And I appreciate hearing about that as well. Anyway, congratulations. I have to say, I was talking to Commissioner Maps. I have to get a matrix of the different police accountability commissions. I get confused, and if I'm confused, I can only imagine what the public thinks. So I'm sure you have some visual, and it doesn't have to be perfect, but I want to get something that I can help track myself with. So I thought I'd just tell you that for the record. Anyway, I'm pleased to say that I approve of these new people joining. I vote aye.
I want to thank our volunteers for agreeing to serve on this important committee, and I want to thank Mr. Thompson in particular for taking time out of his day to come and speak with us in person. It's good to see you, and I look forward to our ongoing discussions about this important work. I vote aye.
This is one of the toughest citizen committee assignments, I think personally. And, Mr. Thompson, you probably didn't know that before they roped you into serving, so congratulations. It's too late to take it back. But hey, the good pay makes up for it, right? But anyway, seriously, I appreciate you and I appreciate your family's history here, and I really enjoyed hearing about that. And I think it's entirely relevant because it shows a commitment and a deep attachment and a passion for our community. And so I'm always grateful when people are willing to step forward and serve on a committee where you're going to have a lot of debates. I mean, obviously, anything that has anything to do with police accountability in today's environment, there's going to be a lot of back and forth and probably even some heated discussions and heated input from the community. And I hope you take it all in stride as just a statement about where we find ourselves as a society, the importance of public safety. Virtually every item we've discussed in the last several hours in this chamber has been focused on the community's demands for public safety on one hand, and how we provide it on the other. And I've always said to people, the mirror of police accountability is what we ask the police to do as a community. We ask them to do an awful lot right now. And so having sort of a separate group of individuals overseeing that process and giving us just candid, honest, best effort advice and feedback is super helpful. And so I want to applaud you and applaud, obviously, our leadership here. They're fantastic, and they work really hard on this, and I want to thank you both for that as well. With that, I vote aye. The report's accepted, the appointments are approved, and all of the exhibits are now added. As Dan correctly points out, they should be, so it's all good, all signed, sealed, and delivered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item, 139, is an emergency ordinance. And I count three of us-- let me skip that for a minute. Shoot, so is 140. Are we going to get Commissioner Rubio back soon?
I've texted Jillian to see if she'll be back.
Let's take a five-minute recess.